Good evening, welcome to a regular meeting of the Brevard County Commission November 14th. And I have Pastor Donnie Legg here, sir.
Yes. Okay. It's an honor to be with you today. Would you pray with me, please? Father, as we come before your throne, we are humbled. We recognize that you're the God of the universe, you're our Creator, and Father, you are the God that is good, you're merciful, you're gracious, and Father, you are just. And Father, we come to you because you tell us to bring all of our care before you because you care for us, and how you've demonstrated that time after time. So Father, we come to you in a time of thanksgiving, where we're thankful for the leadership that you have placed in our lives here in Brevard County, they're sitting before us here this evening. Father, I pray for them because they have a heavy burden. They represent us, and Father, in doing so, they have many decisions to make, and many things to talk over, and many things to pray about. And Father, we just lift them up to you to give them the wisdom to make the decisions that need to be made. Father, I pray for the people behind me. Father, they're here because they too have a voice, and they want and desire for things to be done right, and they bring it to the leadership in the proper way. And they'll discuss it, and I pray that you'll give them a heart of passion in their discussion, that, Father, they'll recognize that it's not a fight, but it's just to bring the right thing to notice that would be discussed. And so I pray for them, Father, that everything done here would be in orderly fashion, that would bring honor and glory to you. And so, Father, as we part and go our ways, we commend this time, this committee meeting, to you, that you would be honored and glorified in and through it. And it's in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Commissioner Goodson?
Yes, ma'am. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a quorum, we'll call the meeting to order. Commissioners, I'm going to rearrange the schedule just a little bit to help people get out of here if they have a short item. But I have a quick question. I had a request to perhaps table F-22, but I want to find out where you guys are at on it, because it'll make a difference where this item's placed. Would anybody like to table this? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and hear F-22, but I'm going to move it to right before the I items, because I have a lot of cards, and I think these other items are going to move fairly quickly. We have minutes that need approved for September 5th and 12th.
So move Madam Chairperson.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Commissioners, do you have any consent items you would like to hear separately? F-22 is going to be moving to the end of the meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, F-28.
F-28? Anything else, Commissioners, that's all? Can I have a motion to approve items?
So, motion made.
Motion by Commissioner Goodson, second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Commissioner Tabia, F-28, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Upon suggestion of Chair Pritchett, the board agreed to put all commission office purchases and travel in the bill folder for transparency and easy public access. Some CRAs detail their travel budgets in the same way that we do. Unfortunately, a number don't. Three of them list travel expenses, but don't list number of days, number of people attending, what conference, or the location of the stay. Further, another CRA has $4,000 expense listed as, quote, "promotional activities," and a, now this is the one that was concerning to me, a $35,229 expense listed as "other charge." None of these are small expenses, they're clearly in the thousands. So I'm aware that, and I probably would have done this in the past, that I could do a public records request, however, that may be seen as abrasive, so I wanted to see if I could get a feel for the board, if they were interested in the chair sending out a letter to these CRAs. And there's just three of them, asking for a little more detail on, again, travel with the number of days, number of people traveling, what conference and location of the stay, a little bit more detail on what a promotional activity is. And again, I think a line item for $35,000 as other charges is just not good enough. I have a sample letter, and so I'd like to make a motion to, first of all, accept the, because they followed statute and provide us with their budget, but second of all, to move that the chair send a letter on behalf of the board to the cities of Cape Canaveral CRA, City of Titusville CRA, and the City of Rockledge CRA, requesting additional information regarding their 2024 adopted budgets.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
That's the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Tabia, and a second?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodson, sir.
Could we also, in that request, ask that we're provided with our budgets? Because I haven't seen them. Did you see them entirely, their whole budget?
Madam Chair? Yes, they were attached to the agenda. I'd be more than willing to share it, but yes, we did get the, we did get the CRA budgets. I have a copy here, if you want, of the full CRA documents.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think sometimes these things are in question, though. They're hard to figure out unless you can get a line item breakdown, so.
Yeah, and the line item at $35,000 as other charges wouldn't, it would raise a red flag if it came out of one of our commission offices, I think.
Put something on the side saying what they're for. You know, I don't think.
I'm sure it was proper.
I agree, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think what I'm working on maybe at the beginning of the year, that anybody that serves an elected capacity is going to send the county commission their data for travel. You know, it's probably fine, but there's no other way to see it unless you do a public records request, which feels personal. So I think if you guys, I'll bring it maybe January, February, that anybody sitting in an elected position would be turning their data in to put on our budget, our agenda, just so that people can see what we're spending.
And, Madam Chair, here are the three suggested letters, just with that ask, that they be returned to you, so you don't have to rewrite the wheel on this.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, Commissioners? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we are moving into... Item G-1.
G-1 is requesting that the board approve and authorize the chair to execute a resolution and first lease renewal with Desiree Ranches of Florida. This is the first of two five-year renewals that are made available under the original 20-year lease.
Yeah, we did. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this one?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Tabia, second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Clerk, we did pass the rest of the consent agenda, correct? Okay. No, it's okay.
Except for F-22.
It's easy to mess that up. Thank you, ma'am. Moving into item H-1. I'm sorry, guys, I want to move this one. Yeah, you know it, I already told you, just so I can get the fast ones done quick. Okay, we're going to come back to it. Okay, we are on item...
Do we want to do presentation?
Yes. Let me do two quick ayes, and then we'll go to presentation. Okay, item I-1.
I knew you were going to take a while on this one. It's legislative intent and permission to advertise modifications to Chapter 122 entitled Waterways to allow for the establishment of four anchoring limitation areas near the O'Gally and Melbourne causeways. The ALAs are depicted on the Attachment 3 maps of your agenda packet. In March of this year, the City of Melbourne passed a resolution to petition the county to adopt these areas. The areas would be clearly buoyed and marked, and vessels could moor for no longer than 45 days in any six-month period. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chairman, the Chairperson, I have moved to approve.
Motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Item I-2.
Good evening, Commissioners. I-2 is a performance bond reduction for Pangaea Park Phases 3 and 4 in District 4, requesting the board to release a portion of a performance bond. This is $10,682,650.49 as of October 27, 2023. We have a certificate of completion for Phase 3, and this is in relation for Pangaea Park for the Vera Company.
Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Felton, second by Commissioner Steele. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Item I-3.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is a request that the Board of County Commissioners review the attached applications for consideration for appointment to the North Brevard County Hospital District Board for Seats 5 and 6.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, this is a wonderful community hospital that we have in North Brevard. I think even the property it was built on was donated by some wonderful people that lived up there forever, Mr. and Mrs. Parrish. Just wanted to say that, because I'm so proud of our hospital. But we have some nominations on here, and if you guys would, I would love to have Mr. Dan Anton on it. He's a new appointee, and Jerry Knoffel's been on there a while, so he's going to bring a new addition. He's very smart, and he'll do good on the board. And then I'd like to also have Dr. Elizabeth Gaffo. She is a hospice doctor, and she is very, very kind in the community, does a lot of good work for our community. So I would request if someone wouldn't mind making a motion to appoint those two to this board.
Madam Chairperson, I move to appoint those two individuals.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Steele, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. All right, we are going to move into item F-22. I've done them all, right, guys?
Correct.
Okay, good. Item F-22. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do F-22.
Oh, yeah, the resolution, I'm sorry.
We're all over the place tonight. The Vice-Vice Chair has a special resolution he's going to do, and then we have a presentation as well. Sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we're doing this a little out of order. We have an employee here, and that, I want to allow her to get home to her family, Michelle Long. She's with Public Works and Human Resources and a customer service, customer support specialist. 23 years of service in Brevard County. A little bit about Michelle, she started with Roden Bridge nearly 25 years ago, which now is part of Public Works Department. She's served in a variety of roles, from administrative secretary to human resources and customer service specialist, each role adding to her extensive knowledge and experience in public works matters. Her years of providing our citizens and employees with exceptional customer service and unwavering can-do attitude has given her the distinction of being one of our most valuable team members and our go-to person whenever in doubt about an issue or inquiry. Michelle comes to work each day with a positive attitude, servant heart, that inspires us to be our personal best, and wouldn't be remiss without a good fun fact. Michelle loves traveling with her family, spending time with her grandson Ezra, learning, sorry, listening to music and helping others in need. Michelle, you want to come up here for a second? Your position as a customer support specialist dealing with the public is, there's nothing more critical. You're the face of, we may be the face, but you're the one that does the work and has the communication, so we greatly, greatly appreciate your service. And being willing to stay here maybe till the end of the meeting, that says a lot about it. So, if you have a second, would like to say anything, we just, you have our grateful appreciation.
I wouldn't normally, but I will give you a fun fact about my employment here. In August of 1997, when I came to work for Roden Bridge, I was grateful for a job. I'd recently been laid off, and it was Mr. Tom Goodson that reached out to a friend of his and said, "I've got somebody that needs a job, do you have a place for her?" And so I've been here ever since.
Wow. That is brilliant.
That is. What's that, Madam Chair? Was that who? I'll give you another fact that's amazing.
Wait, turn on your microphone.
Oh, okay, it's on. She didn't turn it. Another fact that's amazing. She is my cousin by marriage.
My niece by marriage.
Is it niece? I knew she... I knew that she was in the, she was in the hen house somehow. Yep, and she's just as wonderful that you've said. And that's the last thing I've ever done for anybody.
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much.
Thank you. Hopefully we have any more years here. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, Mr. James Cannon, sir? You have a presentation for us for St. John's Water Management, sir.
With your permission?
Certainly. Okay.
My name is Jim Cannon, and I am here tonight on behalf of St. John's River Water Management District, and I certainly appreciate the time, and I'll try to be brief. The district in Brevard County have an extensive record of a successful partnership to support and facilitate water management programs and projects. Those partnerships serve as an example of what can be accomplished when multiple entities work together with a shared vision and a common goal. We, the district, have contributed to a number of projects over the last decade through cost sharing, a program whereby the district provides a portion of the funding for qualified projects. The sheets I handed you show the completed, and in some cases still ongoing, district-funded cost-share projects since 2014, and those were updated as of June of this year. Earlier this year, the district actively kicked off a new effort to highlight some of those cost-share projects within our 18-county region, including here in Brevard, using short videos. The specific projects chosen represent a good cross-section of the work undertaken by the district and our partners, and we think it's a good way to inform the public about the tremendous investments being made in our communities at both the county and the local levels. So I'm here tonight to share one of those videos, if we could play that.
We're here at the South Central Sea Septic to Sewer Project in the Indian River Isles area. This is an over $8 million project that the St. John's River Water Management District has provided about a $1 million grant to help with funding. Septic to sewer conversion is very important to the health of the Indian River Lagoon. This is because septic systems only remove about 40% of the pollution coming from the sewage that moves through them. So by converting them to the sanitary sewer system, we're able to send that pollution to a wastewater treatment plant where they're able to treat it to a level that removes the pollution, keeps it out of the lagoon.
The estimated nutrient load reduction water quality benefit to the Indian River Lagoon for just that project is roughly 1,600 pounds per year of nitrogen. Now, 1,600 pounds doesn't sound like a lot on the face, but if you multiply that times the number of projects in Brevard, the number of projects in our 18-county region, and the number of projects throughout the state, it starts to add up very quickly. That video is live as of today. It was posted on our YouTube channel, which is youtube.com/user/Florida'sWater, and you can find a number of other videos with specific, brief videos with specific projects on that YouTube channel. Mr. Walker and his team are certainly encouraged to share and post as they see fit, and I would also like to thank Brandon Smith for volunteering to be the star of that video. And again, I'd like to thank the commission for providing the time and the opportunity to come here and share this video with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you, sir, it was a pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving into item F-22. Commissioners, I have cards here. Are we good to do the cards first, or do any of you guys want to open with comments? All right. Ms. Abbott, did you want to come up first to introduce this, ma'am?
Angela Abbott, my address is 4420 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida, and I'm the attorney for the Brevard County Housing Finance Authority. The request before you is to approve the public hearings that the authority held. There were actually two public hearings, but the final one was October 25th for the increased bond amount. There were no comments received at those public hearings. The application has met the authority's guidelines, the developer's experience, and produces a quality project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Abbott, this is kind of just like a flow-through to where we're able to pass this through, so the people that buy the bonds are able to get tax-exempt bonds for a little bit better, but deal for the families, correct?
Right. So the bonds will be issued by the authority, not by the county, so there's no liability on the county's part. The advantage of having the tax-exempt financing is that there will be requirements for the project to be affordable to some degree. There's a 20%, at 50% set aside, with the remainder at 120% of AMI. So there's an affordability element.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I have a question. Ms. Abbott, in the event that we would not approve this tonight, it would be very simple for the developer to go find other financing. Is that accurate?
I would expect that it would be a market rate project at that point.
Okay, so really, if we stopped everything tonight, it would not kill the project, it would just make the developer go to another entity to make sure that they had financing. Is that correct?
In all likelihood, that they vindicated that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. If you want to stick around for a little bit later, it might be more questions for you later.
More fun.
Okay, I have Drew Warren. Drew Warren, are you here? Okay, I have Deborah Sandberg. And after Ms. Sandberg, I'm going to have Lori Smithy. Hi, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Deborah Sandberg, 2432 Woodfield Circle, West Melbourne. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm here to speak to F-22, the bond consent for affordable housing. Please understand, I agree, we need affordable housing, not only here in Brevard County, but in our entire country. I implore each of you, especially Commissioner Tabia and Commissioner Steele, to please come and see the piece of property that is in question for the bond that this will serve. The property sits right on Mitten Road, abutting Heritage Oaks Boulevard. There is a traffic light at the corner of Heritage Oaks Boulevard and Mitten Road, and this road, Heritage Oaks Boulevard, serves the six communities, and it is a dead end. It's a one-way in, one-way out, but it's dead end. I ask, have any traffic studies been done to see what the property in question will do to the immediate area? The traffic on Mitten Road is a nightmare, most of the time anyway, especially in the morning and after work. We have a lot of children that walk and ride their bikes to Meadow Lane and Central Middle School from the six subdivisions, which is right down the road. The piece of property in question is deeper than it is wider. If this project is built, it will be next to an assisted living memory care center to the north, and of course, our six subdivisions to the east, with just the one road in and out. Once the vote on this bond is made, and it's my understanding, I'm not 100% on this, that it ties the hands of the city of West Melbourne, because it is a federal matter then, and that everything would be in the developer's hands as to how big, how wide, how tall, and what it's going to do to the roads. There is nothing in the immediate area where we are that is three to four stories tall. If you want to go down Mitten Road, there's a ton of apartment complexes that that would probably better be served.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have Ms. Lori Smithy. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Lori Smithy, 24...
Hi, I'm Lori Smithy, 2462 Woodfield Circle. I don't have much here prepared, but I do want to say, and I'm concerned at what you were saying, that this is a matter of financing the project, and the developer may just go to someone else. But I just want to at least voice our tremendous concern for this government-subsidized apartment on this property. We've lived there for 21 years. We're concerned about the traffic, the safety, the overload on the schools, the overload on our utilities, potential crime if it's lower-income housing. And I think there are places that this would be more appropriate. You know, we talked about down Mitten Road. There are apartments, there are open lots where they could build something like this that would be more appropriate than the location that they're looking at, which is not only small, but it's not at all fitting with the community and what West Melbourne has planned for that community. So, I don't know to what extent you're able to really stop this from going forward, but it's a tremendous concern for us that live there and have our families there. And it's just devastating to see something like that go up in our backyard. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lennox King, and then Ms. Janet Miller.
My name is Lennox H. King, 1942 Woodfield Circle, West Melbourne. Very briefly, I'd really like to see this tabled. We've got, with those six communities, it's probably somewhere in the vicinity of 800 homes, which I would guess would come out to, what, 2,000 people? I'm just guessing. But the traffic right now is really bad. I just came in last night from going to get my wife and I dinner, came in and had like six cars in front of me to turn left to get into our subdivision off Mitten. And it's crowded now. It's going to get worse. And I was a little disappointed. I don't know what the procedures are, but I just found out about this last night. And I really thought there will be some way for communities that are so close to where this is going on to be notified of what's going on. So, I'd really like to see it be tabled so other people in the community that know nothing at all about this. Even our city council apparently told very recently they did not have any knowledge of this. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I have Ms. Janet Miller. And after Ms. Janet Miller, there's going to be Rod Hints.
Janet Miller. I live at 2450 Windchaser Court in Heritage Oaks. I'm president of our HOA. I don't have a lot to add to what has already been said, other than I would like to see this tabled. This was a horrific Friday afternoon sprung upon us. None of us knew it. I have to say, I thought it was a little shady. I've had contact with the owner of the property and thought that we had established a little bit of a rapport. So, I was quite shocked when I saw how this came about. I worry about our children. I worry about our walkers. Just a week ago, we had a woman hit right there at the intersection just before daylight. The area is not conducive to what you want to do. I have no opposition to affordable housing. We need it. Our veterans need it. Our homeless need it. There's no question that it's needed throughout the state, throughout the United States. But I wonder, have you all, have any of you come to that area and looked at it to see how inappropriate that corner is for this type of facility? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have Rod Hints.
Hello, Rod Hints. I'm at 2451 Windchaser Court in West Melbourne. And I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Woodfield at Heritage Oaks HOA Association. I, too, was blindsided by this. The attorney said that they had actually had a time for, you know, community feedback. That is absolutely news to us. While every steps were taken to publicize that there was going to be an opportunity for such, never got to anybody that really has the skin in the game for what's going on here. As has been said, we've got a lot of cars on Mitten Road. Traffic there is horrendous. It's fixing to get a lot worse. There's an apartment building going up just south of I-95 off of Mitten Road, Dolly Apartments. That's adding about 560 new cars within the next year to the traffic on Mitten Road. There's a single-family development going in across there, 50 homes. That's going to add approximately another 100 cars to the Mitten Road traffic. And now we want to add another 200 with this project. Again, we've not seen any type of traffic study that tells us what that impact's going to be. Those of us that live there can't even imagine what an additional 800, 900 cars going up and down that road is going to be like. So, I think it's really time that everybody needs to step back, look at this, do the due diligence, and really decide, is this the right thing to do? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Earl Miller? And then Ernest Savage?
Hi, my name's Earl Miller. I live at 2450 Windchaser Court in West Melbourne. I just wanted to say that any apartment, any building at all at that location would be bad, because as they said, you know, children are coming by going to school. The traffic there is horrendous. All they do anymore is just sit there and wait and wait and wait on the traffic. But it backed up from 192 almost all the way to I-95 overpass. And in the mornings, you know, it's that way. The evening is that way. And the traffic, as you all know, the growth in this county is just getting bad. And we need to stop, you know, and slow down on this, because I've lived here 60 years, and I've seen the growth. I've seen a lot of growth, but nothing like's going on the last five years. So, I think if you will, just come and look at that area, because, you know, that's a turn lane right there for traffic going south. And it just, there's a bottleneck there. There's a motorcycle killed under a bus a couple of months ago. And so, it's just gotten bad in there. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Earl Miller?
That was Earl.
You are Ernest. Thank you, sir.
So, thank you, Board. My name is Ernest Savage. I live at 2390 Brookshire Circle. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. To your comment, Commissioner Steele, I appreciate that. We may only be able to influence this decision by delaying that decision being made today. If that's the solution that is available to us today, that's exactly what we would like to request. All right? I knew we were in trouble when I was getting conversations, when I was getting phone calls from our local West Melbourne leaders at Sunday afternoon saying, "Hey, we have an issue," right? To echo the comments that have been made here today, that it's a safety issue, right? There's a, we had a traffic study done in West Melbourne to just put in a right turn lane at this intersection that's in question. And that study was conclusive that that intersection is dangerous. We've already heard someone was killed by a bus earlier this summer. We've heard that someone was injured. A pedestrian was hit by a vehicle in that intersection just last week. Within a tenth of a mile of that intersection that's in question, we have three schools, right? Over 500 students walk back and forth to and from those schools from our six neighborhoods daily. To increase traffic in that intersection, whether it be foot traffic or whether it be by vehicle, I think is inappropriate, and it's worthy of further discussion. And that's all we're asking for, is an opportunity to voice our opinion and be a part of the process. To date, we have not had that opportunity, and that's why you see we're here. We literally had 36 hours to try to coalesce around this issue. And, you know, we've been feverishly working to just make our voices known. And so, again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before you. And I look forward to engaging in the dialogue as we go forward. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Suzie Kadex. You knew I was going to struggle, didn't you? Then Linda Ran.
I'm going to let you say your name for me.
I was going to say, you don't want to try Kudzarsky? My name is Suzie Kudzarsky. I'm at 2133 Woodfield Circle, and I live in West Melbourne. I probably have nothing useful to add to what these people have already said. I have no prepared notes, but I wanted to only add that the last gentleman said we wanted to have a dialogue. I want you to vote no. I think that the idea that the developer can put an ad in cocoa for public comment and expect people down in West Melbourne to see the legal ad that he put up there is insane. I don't understand why there is no opportunity for a public comment period. I don't understand why you have to vote on it as a entirely grouped consent issue. I don't understand why with the live-local rules that the city's hands are tied as to what they are able to do and not do for us. We elect our leaders because we agree with their viewpoints and that they're going to safeguard our community and that they're going to do what they have told us they wanted to do, which was to make West Melbourne into a vibrant city where, or town, that has parks and walkways and small mom-and-pop shops and restaurants and things like that. And instead, we have our community, which is all one and some two-story homes, no four-story anything anywhere in the area. And, but without the city council, without you guys being able to do very much, we're supposed to allow a four-story affordable housing project be put in there because there's some federal money available. I just don't understand that. And I think that the issue is crazy that we had no time whatsoever to prepare for this. We only learned about it Sunday afternoon. So, to get this many people in the room and probably double that at least, sending you emails and making phone calls, given the fact that we had no time whatsoever to even learn how the project works, what it is, any of that is unfair. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Linda Ran? Ms. Lisa Steele, you'll be next, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Linda Ran, 2244 Botanica Circle, West Melbourne, Florida. I live in the Preserve. I've lived there going on 13 years, and I've seen the traffic just get really, really horrific. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, because I've got really the same thing to say that everybody else has. I would just like to say that I would think that we'd be, have more options to get more information about it. And I ask that you table this at this time and vote no for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Lisa Steele, and then Paul Smithy.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. Basically, a lot of people have said a lot that's in my notes. So, I'll try to make this brief. This has brought on us really quickly. We have three days for us to gather everybody and get here. If we were given more time, this room would be a lot more full of people. So, we understand to a point the Live Local Act. However, we in West Melbourne, we are taxpayers and we are voters. And this proposed building of 105 units plus a dental and medical office is set to exit on Heritage Oaks Boulevard. That's the main road that comes in and out of our neighborhoods. Our neighborhood has 735 houses with children who walk to and from schools two times a day, five times a week. They also, they will be using Heritage Oaks and Mitten Road. That area is already congested. We recently had a pedestrian, like somebody said, that was hit by a truck. And we recently, a motorcyclist was fatally hit just a block away. Adding 105 families with places close to 850 families, and those are only single families. So, we are asking you to please refrain from approving this funding until a developer provides a more desirable, less congested location. Also, a time that gives residents an opportunity to respond. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Paul Smithy?
Yes. Hi, I'm Paul Smithy, 2462 Woodfield Circle, West Melbourne, Florida. So, obviously, I'm going to reiterate some of the things I just said. But for me, it's pretty much the community has planned out West Melbourne. And the area where this is going is a bunch of single-family homes. And it is our neighborhood. Heritage Oaks is our neighborhood. That road is for our neighborhoods. So, they're going to put an apartment complex that is four stories. It does not at all blend in with what the planning was for. But they have allotted some areas just a mile, mile and a quarter south to where all the new apartment complexes are being built. It's down there near a bunch of shopping. It's the kind of the right place to put an apartment complex, which you can tell that West Melbourne has planned that out. So, putting it here is just the wrong choice, the wrong location. They can go put it down there. There's still land available down there. These units going in as we speak. So, that's my point of view. Thank you.
Your G looks like there's a little I there, so. You guys just like keeping my toes, right?
Hi, Mark OTA, 200 East Canton Avenue, Winter Park, Florida. I represent the developer. And I'm just here, I don't have a presentation, but if the commission has any questions, I'm happy to answer whatever I can.
I do. I'm just curious. So, after you build these, what would be about the rent you're going to charge for each one of these apartments?
Uh...
Because I know some are one-bedroom, so...
Yeah, they're a combination of one, two, and three bedrooms. And the rent structure is going to be driven by every year when the state of Florida puts out the rents. They tend to be, you know, 60%, 70% of market rents. I don't know the exact rents in Brevard County right now. I'm on the developer's side, not on the management's side. But I would expect it to be, you know, somewhere in the low thousands.
So, it's really not low income, it's just affordable?
Yeah, it is. It's first off, a seniors' community.
Okay.
And it is mixed income. We're anticipating a range of affordability set aside. So, we'll have some that are closer to market and some that are a little bit lower on the scale.
Okay. Commissioner Steele?
Thank you. First of all, thank you all for coming out tonight. Unfortunately, what you have here is a bill that has passed. It's a live-local bill. It's passed, and it's statute now. And that statute is in effect, and the law is in effect. And the city of West Melbourne had to abide by that law. And to my knowledge, they have not passed an ordinance that could possibly have tightened up some of the issues that were going forward. But this board here can do absolutely nothing about what's going on. We can have compassion for you in regards to the traffic and all of those wonderful things that you talked about. But there's a word called preemption. And real quickly, I'd like to tell you what preemption is. When you go to elect a state representative or a state senator, probably the first thing that you need to ask them is, are you going to preempt local laws? Are you going to do away with home rule? And if they say they are, then you need to go find another state representative or another state senator to help. You are in a spot tonight that is not a good spot. And it is very difficult to sit here and tell you that we cannot do a thing about this. I cannot in good faith table the financing on this. It would be, there's nothing that you would be able to do It would be there's nothing that you would be able to do to convince these people not to go forward with the project. There's nothing that the city's going to be able to do to stop people from going forward with this project. It's preempted. It is state law. And it's it's unfortunate, but it's reality. So I'm sorry, I can't vote to table this project tonight. I can't vote any other way other than these people that have done this have done it according to the law. They presented it to your city council and to your and to your city council's people and. Okay, ma'am, I I listen, stop, please. First of all, in order for them to get through this, they had to file a site plan with your city. So don't tell me they didn't because they have to. It's statute. So as a result of that, the city had a certain amount of days to review it, make their comments, and go forward. At this particular point in time, that time limit's about up. The financing's been approved. And unfortunately, we can't do a thing about it. So I I'm sorry. I wish we could. I wish preemption wasn't there, but it is. And we have to we have to abide by the law. So I I'm very apologetic, but unfortunately, I can't do a thing about this tonight.
Commissioner Tabaya, Commissioner Goodson, you're next.
He can go.
All right, sir. Question.
Certainly.
As Commissioner Steele said, you've been before the city of West Melbourne, correct?
We have been in front of staff. We do not have a formal site plan submitted.
So you have not. So you have not been.
Hold on just a second. Guys, no outbursts at all, or I'm gonna clear you out. Everybody gets to talk.
Okay, now, under the new senate law in Tallahassee, how long have you been working on this project?
Probably four months.
Four months. When was the law? When was the law enacted?
Look like I'm not I'm not sure.
July 1st. So you've been working on it since July 1st?
Shortly after.
Okay. And you have had one publication about this project, is that correct?
The the advertising of the publication was done by the Housing Finance Authority.
So you've had one, correct? Two. And they were in the Florida today?
It was on the Housing Finance Authority's website.
So.
And and.
On the county's website, on the coming events section.
If this board voted no tonight, how long would it take you in days to get your other financing that seems to be so easy to get?
We would just start the application process. It's not, you know, it's not a two-week process. It's an, you know, it to to put other funding together would take a little bit of time, but we would start that process immediately.
So two months?
A few months.
A few months. That would give them ample time, even though if Commissioner Steele, I'm sure he's right, they have nowhere to go. It would at least give them somewhere to say they could go as far as objecting, correct?
Well, certainly, although this isn't it's not the it's not a land use hearing today, though. And there would not be, I believe, a land use hearing for them to object object to. So if we if we have some other if we had some other funding, we're not necessarily asking you guys to approve that funding.
Right. Madam Chair, one more and I'll leave them, okay? How many other parcels of land in Brevard County or the state of Florida are you looking at?
We are currently working on. No other ones in Brevard. We're working on a couple in Lake County, a couple in Seminole County, probably a total of six or seven throughout the state.
I hate to do it, Madam Chair, please. Let me allow me just one or two more. In your whole proposal of this affordable housing or whatever you wish to call it, do you or are you going to keep up landscaping for a period of time? Or is that something that you're not gonna do?
We we own and operate our communities long-term. So we have a really, really solid interest in keeping them up. And that, of course, includes the landscaping.
Okay, last question. Would you say that SB 102, is that it?
Right.
SB 102 is like an opening of the well for your company?
We don't know. You know, time will see. I think there are a lot of municipalities that are challenging it. You know, whether whether it stays law of the land for one year, 10 years, 20 years. I I just don't have a feeling for that.
Did you have to apply to the state with any kind of permit? I mean, any kind of plans or what you intend to do that the state has to see that stuff?
No.
That's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't that amazing?
Well, it is, you know, the 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 state, the state, the state takes. As Commissioner Steele was saying, the state puts the guidelines in that says that, you know, the municipality shall approve. But then they leave it to the municipalities to do their architectural reviews and their site plan reviews. And we have to go we have to go through that full process with the city, both on the buildings and on the site.
Okay, but other than that, you could build an outhouse. If you get it approved, it would be okay, correct?
Well, if if the city, you know, allowed that type of building.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Tabaya, I'm gonna talk first, if that's okay, because you said. Just a thought on this. I I think the the part that's probably the most struggle would probably height or whatever fitting in. But I gotta tell you, we we did this on ballot. Everybody's affordable housing gotta have it until it moves close to your house and nobody wants it. And I think because you start thinking that it's low-income housing, and I don't get that either. I have three young daughters trying to find places to live, and there's just nowhere that's affordable. And then we have these people working jobs that don't pay 15, 60,000 a year and there's nowhere to live. You have young families starting out. They have nowhere to move into. And eventually, they're gonna all be staying, living with mom and dad because they're gonna have like 15 people living in your house because there's nothing affordable out there. And the way the market's moving, so we have got to like tighten up our belts and allow some changes with this. I'm sir, I would ask that if you guys would, and I know we had requested this before, maybe take a pause, have a community meeting, maybe listen to the concerns and be good neighbors. Maybe that would help alleviate a lot of the concerns. But I agree with Mr. Steele. I'm an accountant, and this is a pass-through as far as allowing investors not to pay as much taxes on money they have in returns on bonds. And probably sit in this position, I will never deny that because I'm not approving your project or denying your project. So just financially, for people who want to invest in projects to help communities, it's a good thing. And plus, you know, the governor sent this out, all the state of Florida reps did it. We voted for it on ballots, you know, we voted all this through. And so I I think, though, if you guys would be good neighbors and have a meeting and help alleviate some of this. So I'm gonna ask the commissioner, I don't know where Commissioner Tabaya's gonna go, that maybe we would take just a pause so you guys can talk to people, maybe get them comfortable. But I'm gonna support this going through because I don't think we should stop investor financing. And the project's gonna get approved. And as far as you get another financing, we are at such a low end for inventory for housing, you're not gonna have a hard time getting that and getting it built. So just so you guys know, this is the thing. So, you know, be good neighbors with the builders and perhaps you can, you know, talk to them, get some things that make you feel comfortable. It is 109 units times two cars. It's like 218 traffic cars, so it's not the 900. So I think maybe if you guys got some clarification, you could possibly get a little bit more comfortable. And they're not cheap. So I I just think you're gonna see a lot of young, maybe techs and people just coming in trying to find a place to live. So that's gonna be my request. But Commissioner Tabaya, I'll let you go next, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And. I was pretty solid coming in in all honesty. And then I heard some words that I really did not like hearing. Those words were shady and blindsided. So you may be on the opposite side of this development. There's nothing wrong with that. But what you must recognize is that what was currently done was done according to statute. Ms. Abbott advertised this correctly. And if you're the head of the HOA, goodness gracious, HOA folks, man, if you park your car at an angle, they'll be the first one to ticket you for for parking. So if anyone should be paying attention, it's it's people sitting on the HOA. And maybe you will now. But to come up here and accuse what I took as this board and and maybe it's some of the emails I got as well. To be clear, this was on consent because every other bond hearing like this in the seven years that I've been a commissioner has been on consent. And we haven't gotten one no vote. Now, the paradigm has shifted here because of the Live Local Act. And I understand that, and I understand that that process is new. But and I understand you may disagree with this project, absolutely. But let me dissuade you of the fact there was nothing shady going on here by either the developer, the organization that was dealing with the the public notice of anything. So so I'm taking that completely off the table. I'm gonna put that behind because there were one gentleman in particular came up here and said he wanted to be part of the conversation. And I and the bulk of people were were positive. So let me tell you something that I'm sure you're probably aware of with Senate Bill 102. What Senate Bill 102 allows is a developer and you gotta maximize profits. I completely understand that, is to find a piece of property and look at density and then go find another piece of property in that jurisdiction, in the entire jurisdiction of West Melbourne, that it has a higher density, and then transport that density onto that other piece of property. That's what allows the four stories and all that stuff. That is out of my control. That is out of the control of the city of West Melbourne. But that is an advantage given to developers to help ameliorate the situation of of affordable housing. So let me be clear with this. This is in County Commission District 3. I represent County Commission District 3 right now. But this project is within the jurisdiction of the city of West Melbourne. So many of the issues that were brought up here, while understandable, traffic, you know, I'm surprised I didn't hear drainage, but normally, we hear drainage on these type of things. Safety with motorcycles and kids and all that stuff. That is something that the city is and the elected officials are familiar with, not any of us. The zoning classifications in West Melbourne are completely different than that in Brevard County. I'd be lying to you if I said I knew without Billy's help over here and Bethany in my office about all zoning classifications. However, what your response, and I know you can't respond right now, but your response would be, but that was taken out of our hands. And I understand, completely understand that position. And we are given something, an unusual responsibility here. We have the ability to vote no on this financing. And and I'll tell you right now, though it was close, after some things that were very disappointing that were said, I will be voting no on this. But this is not, I don't see this as a traditional zoning issue because normally, the way zoning has traditionally happened here, many times, they take into consideration whose district it's in. But this has far-reaching implications when it comes to affordable housing that would not only impact District 3, but impact all of Brevard County. This could set the precedent that could change things. So I, while I know may know District 3 pretty darn well, this is much bigger than District 3. So I would ask that the rest of the board use their best judgment on this one. Take the fact that it's not, take the fact out that where it is in District 3 and use your best discretion. Don't, obviously, you're not gonna vote with me one way or another. I will be voting no, but there certainly would be no hard feelings if you go in a different direction. So I want to hear, you know, there'll be a motion made. Again, I'll, you know the way I'd be voting, but I I'll have a second motion after this. I wish it was said better. I mean, it really bothers me on 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 the shady and the blind side of stuff. If you said this was the first time I heard it, that would have been one thing. But I think there's something nefarious going on here. Couldn't be any further than the truth. But as a show of goodwill, I'll have a motion here. In fact, I might as well go ahead and make this motion prior to the the vote on the one to authorize the county attorney's office to investigate legal methods in which more input could be solicited from citizens and elected officials at public bond, public bond validation hearings for projects that are located within municipal limits. And I discussed this with Morris very briefly. I heard from a city council member, I mean, it's public record. Council member Adams called me up and I spoke with her for about 10 or 15 minutes. I honestly believe she would be here right now if there wasn't a city council meeting going on right now. But I would like other folks up here to have that benefit. And I I asked Morris if we could force it on West Melbourne to send a resolution back to us, letting him letting letting us know if we support her or not. And he said, you know, there's, we probably can't do that. But this is extremely complicated because we're dealing with federal law when it comes to financing. We're dealing with state statute when it comes to the Live Local Act. But there's gotta be a better way to get more impact from input, I'm sorry, from people like you because we don't have that knowledge base on zoning within a municipality. We don't. And and again, I understand, I wish it would have been handled a little bit more diplomatically because we've all done our best. We've all done our best up. This is completely new to us. So, Madam Chair, can we start? I I asked Morris, I asked Morris on that one. This is gonna take a little bit of research on on his, but I think it would have a big payout because we're gonna see more of these in the future.
Commissioner Tabaya, I think that's a good motion. I mean, because that's something that we should research. In the midst of that, can we give them time to go get with the neighbors, see if they get people happy by any chance over the next month and let them come back? And we could just take a vote because they don't know what's going on. Maybe they'll negotiate something different, maybe because it's all new to us. So maybe they can go and negotiate something.
Madam Chair, what I'm, what I think will happen is I've heard, I've heard, I've gotten more many emails. These folks are not very happy. Unfortunately.
Well, remember when we had Port St. John, they all showed up with the affordable too. Nobody's ever happy, but maybe they can get to a place where they can get to a some kind of agreement. Because we do need affordable housing. Again, again, there's some things in it that just kinda don't fit either. But maybe they could negotiate something.
Madam Chair, can I ask one quick question?
I'm just throwing out a question to you, if you would.
Mr. Goodson's my, Commissioner Goodson's my favorite for for short meetings and less meetings. So I, my bet is here that if we we were actually continue this for a month, as as many of these folks have said, instead of 11 people showing up. And you're right, that's very good, that 11 people can show up when there's a city council, that we're gonna have 50 people show up. I know West Melbourne does turn out folks. And I don't think their minds are gonna change. So I don't want Tom or Commissioner Goodson to get mad at me.
Heck, I agree with you. I'm gonna second your motion.
I know, but here's the thing. I know this is your district, but right across the road, it's his district. So I'm trying to weigh you guys a little bit, pretending almost like he's Christine. And so.
Oh, stars and garters.
I know.
I would be more than happy to second John's motion.
That's a good motion.
To have Morris do the research as far as the bonds go, but but we still have stuff on the table.
I know we do. I know we do. I was trying to get the easy one out of the way before I got to the tough one.
I'll go ahead and second that motion, and maybe we can get that out of the way and get back to the meat of the issue.
Okay, did you guys get that motion? You need him to say it again.
Say it again.
Say it again?
Okay.
She said she has it. Okay.
Okay, and this was merely because this was more than a couple hours worth of work. And I didn't want to burden the county attorney's office with anything that that wasn't trivial without board support. So we got a motion.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Used to have the floor, Commissioner Tabaya.
You're the, you're the, you're the chair. So that'll, it'll, it's your call.
I was submitting to you.
No, it's, I'm, 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 I'm gonna be no, I'm gonna be no on this. If these these folks, I'm sure will gladly show up again. I'm sure they'll bring five people. I'm sure their answer will be, will be, you know, I.
I know.
I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave that up to you. You just have to come here again.
It's a tough project. It's just tough when we're trying so hard to get affordable housing into. And no matter what you build, since you say affordable, people are not gonna like it. So that's, we're trying to get something that'll work. Commissioner Steele, you're up.
Thank you so much. I'm so apologetic. I apologize to the city of West Melbourne for not knowing that the site plan was not submitted. Now, let me tell you what the process. Now, let me tell you what the process says, the process says that once the site plan is submitted, that the city has to, has to look at it and make a decision on it, and I believe the amount of time is 90 days. So, I assumed that that process was already there. It's not. Here's the bad news, you're really not gonna have anything to say about it anyway. You're not going to be able to discuss this with the city council, you're not gonna be able to, I mean, you can discuss it, but the bottom line is, is staff is gonna make the decisions and it's gonna move forward, and if they meet what the statute says, because here, the city of West Melbourne does not have an ordinance that tightens up what the general statute says. If Christie decided to get a motion to tighten up some of that ordinance, then perhaps you would have a little bit more control over it. But this is the governor's bill, this is the president of the senate's bill unanimously passed, and, and people all over this state want it, and I'm sorry that we're having to go through this, it's terrible, it's preemption at its worst. So, I'm gonna move that we, that we approve the financing and let this man move forward with that, and at some point in time, if you think you can get to the mayor and to the city council and all of those other folks, good luck, and I will follow your lead in the event that you do, because I've seen other cities trying to do it and they've struck out. So, I apologize.
Mr. Steele, I'm gonna request that, again, if you wanna make that motion, you can, but maybe that we allow a pause, because like you're saying, they're gonna build it anyways, but there's an opportunity right now to take a pause, and it's just our time, we can do it, for them to go to the table and maybe find a project everybody might be agreeable with. So, that's just what I would request, that we just take a little pause, let you have a community meeting and maybe see if you can make the community happy. So, it's up to y'all, but that's really gonna be my request. We've done it before, just given time, we're gonna be here for another year or so, so-
Madam Chairperson, only because I love you so much, I will accept your amendment.
I wouldn't, Madam Chair, I don't love you, I just wanna-
If you, I'm sorry, then it's not your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, you can say all you want about it's the governor's bill, the senate's bill and all that, but if you know anything about Tallahassee, they mandate stuff down here that's just smells. And I can't imagine, what you really need to do when you leave this meeting, call every representative, get on their butt, ride 'em like a horse, you know, because somewhere along the line, you pay taxes and you should have a voice. It shouldn't just be, you don't have any voice, and I don't wanna hurt you, but this is gonna be an issue to, Commissioner Tobias is absolutely correct, because I've already seen it in District 2. So, we better get off our, we better get prepared for a fight. And I'm sorry it happened to you, thank you for coming, but I will not support your motion.
I amended my motion.
I still wouldn't support your motion. Because I don't love you.
This is a good thing.
Francis, quit laughing at him. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we should vote on this tonight and then be done with it.
Okay, well, it's a pretty big project just to be done if they can't go back and negotiate and get something that's good for the community and good for the thing, and it would just be a pause for us for a little period of time.
Madam Chairperson, I just don't think it's gonna be able to do any good. It, it, it won't help, it is not going to be able to do any good. They have to follow the statute.
I know, I'm thinking about the community right now, though.
I understand.
Right now, we'll stop it, they're gonna go do it, get other financing, but this is a possibility, they can have some input.
Here's what will happen, what will happen is, is that 50 people will turn into 100 people, 150 people will turn into 200 people, and everybody will be screaming and yelling, but it's not gonna do any good. The statute is the statute, it's the law, that's the way it is. You're not gonna be able to change it until you go to the legislature to change it. And that's not happening right now. It'll be tweaked during the legislature in the next year. But, in the meantime, this man has got a certain amount of money up and he's got, he's got things that he's gotta do, and gone through all the proper channels, and the financing is sitting there waiting to be approved so that people can buy the bonds, and we're denying the people the bonds, we're denying him the right to go ahead and build his units or at least have them financed, and that's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. They've abided by the law, and here we sit in here saying, well, I'm sorry, you have abided by the law, but we're not gonna help you.
Madam Chair, please, but is it not true, Commissioner, he's not abided by the law because there's no site plan in?
That doesn't make any difference. It has nothing to, no, it does not, Commissioner.
He's got 90 days to put it in.
No, Commissioner, it doesn't have anything to do with the financing.
Whatever.
The financing is totally separate from submitting the Live Local Bill.
Well, if you know, if you've been in Tallahassee like Commissioner Tobias and I have, and you, sir, you have seen good bills that were great, they were just, that's what they tell you, they're great bills. And they get out here in the public, then they go back the next year and get some changes that we can all live with. So, I don't, I just can't imagine this is gonna be that great of a bill when you don't give the public the right to discuss it.
I think we all agree with you on that.
I just can't believe that. But if that's what the governor wants, then I don't know why you have a state legislator, just let him pass the bills.
I agree.
I think that about the federal government quite often, too, myself. Commissioner Tobias, can you bring this around, sir?
I will. Sorry, Commissioner Goodson, I, I agree with Commissioner Steele. I believe that there's going to be, there's no common ground here, and the reason I don't think there's common ground here is because of state statute gives the developer the ability to do these type of things through no fault or effort of his own, maximizing profits is there, and, and, you know, I don't think they're willing to cut a four-story building into a two-story building, I don't think an extra buffer is going to do anything. But, to deference, deference to the chair here, I honestly believe, and this was the last thing I wanted to happen, because I really believe West Melbourne is gonna show up en masse next time. All I would ask, that if you do, some of you guys are really good, or, you know, just echo the statements up here, but let's, let's do this as a, you know, whatever, a canary in the coal mine, if you will, we'll give, we're gonna see this situation happen over and over and over again now. So, Madam Chair, if you wanna take a risk, I hope, I've been wrong before, I'm wrong more than I'm right, can we ask the developer if, if he's even interested? He's not obligated to meet with these folks, can we ask him if that's something that even, you know, he's interested in doing?
That's, that's a good question. Are y'all interested in meeting with the community and?
Certainly. We're happy to do that if that's the, if that's a desire of the commission. I tend to agree with Commissioner Tobias, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that, that will necessarily go anywhere, but we're happy to do that. I, I think you're right, it's not gonna, we're not gonna go from 108 units to 54 units, it just doesn't make any financial sense. Building affordable housing and providing good affordable housing is really, really tough. There's not a lot of margin, there's not a lot of wiggle room, but we would be, we would be amenable to doing that and to meeting with them. If this does get deferred, I would ask that we defer it to a date certain in December, so this doesn't drag on.
First meeting in December.
Madam Chair, that is, that is, if you wanna add that to your motion, that's December the 5th. It's a 5:00 PM meeting.
And, and I would ask that, perhaps an HOA member or one of the owners of the group just gets me contact information-
Okay.
-and coordinates with the people on their end.
I'm gonna ask them to do that, to show in good faith that we try to have communication, because maybe after they hear about it, there can be a lot more comfort for it, so that, that would be my desire, is that at least it opens up communication, everybody knows what it is, they're liking or not liking, so. Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. Maybe, on that note, to Commissioner Tobias, we could ask that they just have like five people representing their voice come and speak, and so that we, we can figure out what it is.
That's for Morris.
Do you want me to read this or anything?
Oh, no, that was just for Commissioner Steele because he had a question about the site plan submittal.
Okay.
Just so there was some discussion about it, there was a pre-application meeting submittal with a proposed site plan submitted to city of West Melbourne on October 24.
So, Commissioner Tobias, are you seconding Commissioner Steele's motion to table this to the December 5th meeting to bring it back up?
I don't remember saying, I wanted to table this.
Yeah, I don't think he has, he wanted to-
You modified it to bring it back.
No, I modified it to talk about doing a meeting, and, and we can do that.
Now, you said you loved me and you were willing to-
I do love you, but I don't love you that much.
Okay, Commissioner Tobias, are you willing to make a motion to bring this back December 5th?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Reluctantly, I will make a motion to continue F-22 until the December, whatever I say, December 5th meeting.
You guys like that?
At, at, at 5:00 PM.
The community's liking it, that's good. Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
You're gonna get a nicer Christmas present now from Santa. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Sorry.
Aye?
Aye, I'm there.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
No, you just made the second.
I know.
Okay.
You will.
So, we're, we just made a motion, we're gonna bring it back December the 5th. Did you guys get everybody's votes on that? You're good? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for listening. All right, Commissioner Steele, we are coming back now with item H1, unfinished business with the plan you brought forward as far as the registration. Are you, you guys got this?
Is that H1? Good evening. H1 is a request for discussion regarding issuance of an RFP for software related to resort dwellings. At its last regularly meeting on October 24th, the board directed staff to draft an RFP. We've done so and is now presenting a scope of services for your consideration. Based on the previous discussion of the board, the scope of services has been broken up into three primary elements for your consideration. First, an online registration portal to implement a registration program for resort dwellings. Second, providing an eligibility authorization system for citizens and other interested parties to determine whether a particular piece of property is eligible for use as a resort dwelling. And third, procuring access to software to identify illegal resort dwellings for use in enforcement actions. Should the board wish to move forward with any one of these elements, it is requested that the board consider the various decision, decision points associated with that element contained in the agenda report, and direct staff to advertise for the competitive procurement accordingly, and to authorize the county manager to execute all associated contracts.
Do you have a recommendation?
I have some cards, and I think Commissioner Tobias just made a motion to go for it.
Yeah, right.
Okay, Mr. Keith Johnson, are you here, sir? We outlasted Mr. Johnson. Okay, Jimmy Jenkins?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jimmy Jenkins, I am a long-term Brevard County resident, and I sit as the director of events and member relations for the Florida Alliance for Vacation Rentals. We are a 30-year-old nonprofit association representing the professional vacation rental industry throughout Florida. Our organization works closely with public and private agencies on numerous projects related to vacation rentals. We are a leader in education, compliance, and public policies surrounding the sharing economy. In addition, we recently established our eighth chapter statewide in Brevard County to work on many of the concerns that were highlighted in your reports and previous meetings. With that being said, we would like to offer our expertise in this area of lodging. On October 24th, we were watching the county commissioners' meeting where future regulations and registrations were being discussed. Our organization has been involved with this type of policymaking for decades, and we have seen both effective and ineffective applications of regulations pertaining to vacation rentals. Our involvement can help Brevard with development of a program that meets your goals while also taking into consideration the industry and operational side of the house. The Florida Alliance for Vacation Rentals stands ready to help, like we have done in so many other communities throughout Florida. The most successful programs developed with us have averted litigation and solved many of the community concerns. We respectfully ask that Brevard County consider our involvement in this planning process. Thank you for your consideration.
Do you guys, do you like run a database then that tracks people that are using their homes?
We do not.
Okay.
We use key data, key data who just processes, we just find out exactly, sorry, this is my first time here, just the industry and the market, what it's looking like with occupancy and stuff. We are pro-regulation, as long as it's fair regulation, and I will just say for the record, we do not support background checks for guests because it's difficult to execute, it raises privacy concerns, and is not expected of other rentals, including long-term rentals, so. I also have three vacation rentals in Brevard County as well, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Andrew East, sir, Eastler? And then Gerald Martin?
Good evening, board. My name is Andrew Eastler, I'm at 508 North Harbor City Boulevard in Melbourne, Florida. I have some mixed feelings about this proposal. At very first, I am a techie, so I'm super excited for Brevard to be anticipating potentially adopting new technology to help it, particularly in enforcement actions. There's a couple of concerns that I do have about the implementation. First and foremost, the, the biggest concern here, obviously, we have two, two things, okay? So, we talked about preemption earlier, right, and we have the state regulation and the state statute where we can't expand what we have on the books. And I have a little bit of concern about us expanding registration requirements for people using short-term rentals, and whether or not that crosses the boundary of preemption. The second thing I have here is something, another theme that we've had tonight, which is affordable housing, right, and upward mobility here in Brevard County. Obviously, it's a bigger concern when we have people from out of state, a lot of money coming in here, prices keep going up, and it becomes difficult for locals to be able to survive with these, ability to purchase housing, rent housing, all of these other things. So, that brings me to this second point on the third decision point on your agenda, at least this is the older version that I have here, that says, "Does the board wish to adopt a proactive stance related to code enforcement and/or fire prevention?" Right now, we're not a proactive stance, right? We have code enforcement, where we get complaints from, from citizens, and we go and we investigate. My concern is if we start requiring registration, is that alone going to be enough to then require fines against these people who are necessarily otherwise complying with, with the ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Martin? And then Ms. Beth Martin?
My name is Gerald Martin, my address is 1335 Scorpius Court, Merritt Island, and I've missed, obviously, earlier meetings because we're talking about, we're talking about application software, and my interest is to be, to be able to short-term rent, and if it's the, if it's the overall scope of making sure you have a background check and things like that, the platforms, the short-termeral platforms provide that. They even have like a noise sensor that will notify if there's too much noise coming from your location, there's background checks that are done, and so, within the platforms of the short-term rentals, that stuff is there, so to pay a fee for additional software is kind of redundant, in my opinion. And, you know, the fact that, I'm hoping that if you do agree to go to the software, that it's gonna open up more short-term rentals, because, you know, we don't, we're not affecting affordable housing because the houses that you short-term rent, first of all, brings taxes in, because you, you guys are getting taxed, you get tax dollars coming in, and when people short-term rent, they tend to spend more in our community. And so, my concern is, are we gonna open up more short-term rental locations if we have this software and the residents feel secure that, that they're not being encroached upon, and as far as, as far as affordable housing and, and having short-term rentals affect that? People aren't renting short-term rental affordable houses, you know, they're, they're high-end houses typically, and so, I don't know that we're taking away from, taking away from affordable housing by having short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Beth Martin?
Hi there, Beth Martin, 1335 Scorpius Court. As my husband said, the platforms that are used by short-term rental, they provide, they verify people when they're coming in. If they're, if they have any indication that they have not been a good renter in the past, they will not allow them to rent your place. When you are, well, and the other thing is, the, are, has it been discussed at all about lowering the number of days that people can rent short-term rentals? Has that come up at all?
I don't think so.
I'm sorry, ma'am, it's your time for comment. We usually don't answer questions right now.
Okay, okay. So anyways, so, the, the, it said that you were gonna require an annual fee for the software and the system, but through short-term rentals, the county receives taxes. Plus, the property that we already own, we are paying taxes on. So, you're getting double taxes, or double paid. And, and the properties that are used for short-term rentals are usually much better maintained than if you had a long-term renter in there because you have people coming and going. So, you have people coming and cleaning, checking out everything, and it ends up being a better property for the neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Steele, do you want, I know you brought this. Do you wanna go ahead just for everybody here and tell them why you brought this forward and what you're hoping to accomplish?
Well, what I'm hoping to accomplish is, is that we talked about preemption early on in the last discussion in regards to West Melbourne. The state came in and they basically allow short-term rentals to go in just about any place that they wanna go. So, as a result of that, our neighborhoods have been bombarded with noise and parties and this and that. And we've had more complaints, and every time we get, not every time, but quite often when we get complaints, we find out that they're not even registered properly, that they're not in a zone for short-term rentals. And as a result, we felt like, or at least I felt like, that there were literally probably at least over 1,000 short-term rentals that are not registered, not doing it legally, not paying the TDC taxes. And as a result of that, I felt that it was unfair for them to be able to get a free ride on getting away with not paying TDC taxes. And in addition, creating problems. And we went as far as our County Attorney put together a noise ordinance, and we put that together. And the next step was, is, okay, let's see if we can keep track of who these people are, whether or not they're legal, whether or not they're not legal. And in the event that they're not, we had talked to a company called Deckard Technology, and Deckard Technology gave us a variety of different applications on artificial intelligence types of of cyber, going out and looking, scrolling the universe of all of the internet and coming up with anybody that might be advertising for a short-term rental to determine whether or not they were actually in a legal zone, whether they were actually paying TDC taxes, and a variety of other things. So, it was my position and a lot of people's other positions so that we could get this down to a something to be able to, be able to control, that we started with a registration process for all short-term rentals. That was the request. We met with staff, they came up with this RFP tonight. In addition to that, we were talking about an eligibility authorization system for citizens and other interested parties to quickly determine whether a piece of property is eligible for a short-term rental. And also, the last but not thing, last thing that we wanted to, that we asked them to do is provide access to software to identify illegal resort dwellings for use in enforcement actions. So, in other words, we were gonna be proactive instead of reactive. So, that was the reason for the proposal tonight. And we have, staff did a great job with that. And basically, what I was gonna do was move that we go ahead and deter, and move for the, one, providing an online registration portal to implement a registration program for resort dwellings. And, two, providing an eligibility authorization system for citizens and other interested parties to quickly determine whether or not they're in a legal zone. And then, three, provide the access to identify illegal resorts. So, I would move that we do that, but if we pass that then, then we have to go back and give some decision points and give staff some additional direction. So, my motion tonight would be that we approve that, and we discuss the decision points at the next meeting in regards to exactly what we would be doing for, to give you the RFP guidance to move forward. Is that okay with you guys? Do you feel all right with that, Tad, or Brian?
If that's the Board's pleasure, we'd be fine.
Well, that's my motion.
Okay, I have a second and a motion and a second, and I have discussion. Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I, first of all, ask, I think a motion may, the motion on the table may actually change my line of questioning. Can, what was that motion?
It was basically to move forward with an RFP, to do an RFP on the three proposals that they identified, and then make the determination on the decision points at the next meeting.
Madam Chair, once we've received the RFP, once it's been complete and we have the drafts?
Yes.
Okay, my understanding is that we probably are gonna have to keep an RFP open for, I don't know, 30 or 60 days. So, there's probably no way we're gonna get any type of, you know, response within that period.
I thought that they would provide us with a draft RFP prior to the time that we submitted.
Okay, so this is just to get the draft RFP back?
Correct.
Okay.
And then would make the decision points at the next meeting.
My, my, my understanding is there is a draft RFP.
The draft's scope of services is attached to this agenda item.
And why didn't I see that? Because I wasn't reading it. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll just start with where I was. I kinda would like to handle these, and I know I'm losing, I just wanna handle these in the order that staff set up the decision points, and then use those decision points to determine what parts of that draft RFP will come out.
Okay, so then I'll withdraw my motion and say that I move that we provide an online registration portal to implement a registration program for resort dwellings. And we'll go from there. How's that?
It's a good, good start, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. We have, we have to see if somebody comes back and accepts the RFP, right?
Absolutely. Before we continue with that motion, I have a couple of questions.
That was page one of the scope. Yes, sir, you're on.
Commissioner Steele, if we purchase software to create a portal which identifies where resort dwellings can legally be operated, and citizens can look up addresses and submit a complaint to the county regarding any that are operating illegally, why would we need registration? So, that's decision point two, but decision point two impacts decision point one.
I just would like to know, I would like to make sure that we're getting paid our tourist development tax. And the registration process, I think, would give us that ability to determine whether or not they're paying.
Quick question, Commissioner Tabaya, you said that, so wouldn't they have to register for us to know if they were eligible, or no?
No, Madam Chair. And I support, just to be, just to be clear, I support decision point number two. In fact, I made a motion to go with decision point two back in February of 2020. Decision point two would allow any citizen to, or the county staff, to go and type in an address, as long as it's unincorporated, and then immediately get a return whether or not it was a legal use in that sort of area.
The software would do that?
There are software that has that ability to do that. So, so instead of, so if you believe your neighbor is running an Airbnb, before you file a complaint, you can go in, see it's not zoned for that, and then you have some definitive evidence that what they're doing is illegal. Right now, you just say, "Well, my neighbor is running an Airbnb and it's all bothersome." We have to verify whether or not that's a permitted use at that time. I'm just trying, and Commissioner Steele has brought up a good point. You know, for collecting a fee, registration is the way to go. That comes to question number two off that one. Commissioner Steele, where would the, I think the estimate that we have here is about $75,000, and it could go one way or another. Where are you proposing that $75,000 would come from? Would that be a fee paid by the registrants? It's been mentioned TDT. Since that's a reoccurring fee, that becomes cumbersome.
It would be to registrants of the, of the home, or the short-term rental, yes.
Okay.
You know, a quick thought on that, though. If we did a trial year for the 75, I think the, I think it would be appropriate to be in the planning department's budget. Because if this works as a tool, I think this will greatly enhance what you guys have to do as well, have an easy access to this. Because Commissioner Tabaya, when you brought this up a while ago, too, it was a really good idea. I think what I'm getting thrown off with now, because I think Commissioner Steele wanted to do the registration so that we could see who's eligible, but if the software does that already, it kinda takes care of our problem.
I'm okay, I'm okay.
Is that right, am I off?
Yes, I think you're right.
See if I'm getting educated there.
I'm okay, as long as we can find a way to make sure that these people are paying their taxes.
Right, I agree.
I mean, it just is absolutely unfair for them to get away with that, so.
So, if your software does that?
If the software does that, I'm okay with it.
Does it do that already?
No.
No.
It can, the software might be able to tell whether a property is eligible to use it, to use it as a use or not, not necessarily whether they're paying the TDT today.
Whether they are using it.
So, we go right back to the registration.
Okay.
But, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
A follow-up. Based on the rough numbers that staff presented, they were in the neighborhood of, and when I say staff presented, that was from a potential vendor. They were in the neighborhood of 200, what they estimated, 200 and some legal, permissible-use Airbnbs. If you assume that $75,000 is a correct number, that's an annual fee of $375. Is that, in your estimate, estimation, a fair fee to pay?
No, that's way high.
Okay.
I don't think the state allows us to charge a registration fee of more than $50. Am I correct in that, Brian? Do you know? Or Tad? I think they cap the fee, a registration fee, at $50.
I believe there was a bill to do so in the last legislative session, but I don't believe it passed, but I would have to check on that.
Yeah, sorry, Billy, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, if that's correct, and/or we're only going to cap it at that diminutive amount, that's not gonna make up the better part of that $75,000. And I believe that $75,000, based on the proposed RFP, is gonna come out. My guess is it's gonna be quite a bit higher. So, let's say if you cover $50, that's 10% of it. So, in other words, the registrants are only covering a small fraction of the total cost. Where are you then proposing the rest of that $75,000 per year comes?
Well, I assumed that the numbers were a lot higher than what you're projecting.
They're not.
That whoever, the tech, the, I don't, was that, did that come from Deckard Technology?
Yeah, RentalScape or Deckard, yes. That was the proposal we used.
That was directly in the proposal that was provided by staff a couple of weeks ago.
Well, unfortunately, that's not gonna work. So, I would assume that we're gonna have to eliminate the online registration portal and go to the eligibility verification system. That would be at least helpful in a lot of different ways and give us a little bit of a better grasp on what we're doing. Billy, Tad, do you have any comments on that? Do you think that would help us at all?
It's a good start.
I think there could certainly be some doubt.
That's actually gonna hurt, because if you lose that $10,000, you don't have any of the money for the software. So, it would actually have the opposite effect.
Let me, can, okay. So, I know this is a big problem in District 5. We've been hearing from the District 5 Commissioner for a long period of time. We've got a little bit in District 1. Do you guys have problems in your district with it? Commissioner Goodson, you probably do some, too.
Yeah, Merritt Island.
Yeah, so I.
You have Cocoa Beach also? Yeah, but Cocoa Beach is pretty much Cape Canaveral and Cocoa Beach. Cocoa Beach, they say they've got a problem with starting neighborhoods into Airbnbs. I'm not sure of that. Cocoa Beach has got a problem with everything.
So, maybe just, like, you know, we talked about this at one meeting, just giving it a shot and seeing what kinda data it comes up with and how it helps the community. Because this is more of like, I know we're gonna get taxes, too, but it's more kind of a aid to the residential people that are having a lot of struggle with some situations. So, I don't know if that's such a bad investment for us to just start out with. And then, if we discover that it's really not doing anything, then we don't do it. But if we discover it's really starting to make an impact so people can look things up, which I know Commissioner Tabaya was shooting for a while ago, then maybe just do that. Because I know we spent even a lot of money on a feasibility study lately for a corporation for an area, too, just because it was important to Commissioner. So, I don't know if this might not be a good thing to just do because Commissioner Steele is so invested in it with his district, so. Commissioner Felton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of thoughts here. I think the software to identify the illicit short-term rentals is our bigger problem. I think the cost there is probably prohibitive. And so, I think, you know, if you were talking to registration and then some kind of eligibility system, which, that might be something that zoning can run. It's as simple as, you're zoned for this, and you can do it there, or you're not. I'd like to tell you of a conversation that I had earlier with DOR and with staff, trying to figure out if the Department of Revenue for the state, I mean, they have to conduct sales tax audits. And I think we forget that in this with the short-term rentals, there's 5% for TDT. There's a half percent for the lagoon, a half percent for the schools, and then there's 6% for the state. So, the state has a stake in this, and I believe that they conduct audits. I had a conversation with DOR today, and it was, it was hard to get to really the core issue here. But I will tell you that there's a question of whether we can share data back and forth with DOR and the county. And so, I think ultimately, if somehow we had, and I don't know if I've said this before, but if we had a tax account number attached to short-term rental tax collected, this would be, this would be very simple. This would be a very simple problem because, you know, or you can call it a parcel ID if that's what you want. This is where it's being collected. And so, that fixes the problem of, are you allowed to do a short-term rental here, right? Because if you're collecting tax there and the zoning is a problem, that's very easy. I'm skeptical of the idea that we're not getting the tax from somebody who's doing a short-term rental and not remitting it to the county. And here's the only reason why. New technology. I mean, you know, 10 years ago, you weren't renting, doing a short-term rental from your phone, right? You might have called a management company and they manage a condo or whatever the case may be. But now, I think the vast majority of owners, just because. But now, I think the vast majority of owners, just because it's easier for them, less paperwork, they don't actually collect it and remit it, right? You do it through VRBO, Airbnb, Booking.com, Expedia, whatever the case may be, and they remit it to the county on your behalf. They also remit it to the state on your behalf. So, you don't have to be in the business of being an accountant, collecting money. So, I think there's several different things here. I have to tell you, if we were to continue this to a little bit later date, I might have more, better, I might, I might have better information for you regarding a conversation with what, maybe with the tax collector, and again, maybe with DOR. And I would bring that back to another board meeting if you'd be amenable to that.
I would be more than, yeah, happy to do that. So, can we move to revisit this in December?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. Then I move to revisit this in December.
Okay. Motion to the table to December the 5th or the 2nd week in December.
Okay.
Okay. I'll let you choose. You can bring it back. Okay, motion to the second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Pass this 5-0.
To which meeting? Is that the second meeting? Just to clarify.
You were shooting a peace sign.
I did.
Okay.
For the second meeting.
So, the peace meeting.
Peace.
I just want to make sure for, for the clerk, right? We said the second meeting.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Second meeting in December. Okay?
Okay. Already, we are moving into board reports. County manager?
I believe you all may have received a letter from the school board requesting a joint meeting and requesting that I respond to the school board, the person I was named in there. I'm looking for board direction on that. I was going to suggest that since the county is, you know, the size of the county compared to the cities, that we indicate that once the school board has met with the municipalities, has that input, we would be the good last of the jurisdictions to speak with them. So, we will have all the input from whatever the cities have to offer and, and we would go last. If the board is good with that, that's how I'll respond to the school board.
I, I think that's a good recommendation, but they're, they're also welcome to come here at any time and to give us input if they'd like to.
Yeah, that's, the plan was to go to each of the jurisdictions.
Saying they could even show up in a meeting if they want and speak to us.
Oh, okay, yeah.
A public comment if they'd like to, but I agree with that, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. County attorney?
No report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Goodson?
None.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this the vice vice chair or something?
Not, oh, I'm sorry, never mind, you're last. I'm having quite an evening here trying to keep it straight. Commissioner Felton.
I said plenty.
You didn't say much. Commissioner Steele?
No report.
Thank you. And I, I do want to take just a moment and just hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. You have time to spend some time with your family. And I hope you don't put too much weight on by the time we see you next. And God bless each and every one of you. Vice vice chair, you're on, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today is National Spicy Guacamole Day. So, there's the AI-generated images of Spicy Guacamole Day. A useless Florida fact, Florida has 4,510 islands with an average area of 10 acres or larger. This day in Florida history, on this day in 1969, Apollo 12 launched from Cape Kennedy, Florida, on course to the moon, launched, controllers lost telemetry, contact at 36 seconds and again at 52 seconds when the Saturn V launch vehicle was struck by lightning. After one and a half revolutions, the electrical circuits were checked and checked out, and luckily, no significant problems were noted. And finally, on a second of personal privilege, my dad, a veteran of the United States Air Force, is sitting back there. He will never come to another meeting again, so I greatly, greatly appreciate that.
Also known as Stephen's dad.
Yes, yes. The, the father of a successful doctor.
You're a big sports fan.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very well aware of that fact on a constant basis. And with that, Madam Chair, I call a meeting close. It's, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Two public comments.
You're doing what I'm doing.
I apologize. I greatly apologize. Marshall, Marshall Gilmore. Sorry, Mr. Gilmore.
Would you like to stand up?
This is on Rockledge Drive.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Marshall Gilmore. I'm a resident Merritt Island in 1065 Old Parsoness Drive. I'm an attorney, local attorney here. And I just wanted to come down and introduce myself, because I'm helping the folks that want to make the Rockledge Drive into a state scenic byway and also into a national scenic byway and add it into the current Indian River Lagoon. And so, since I have never been down here in front of you guys, I just wanted to come in so you could see my face and to tell you that I've spoken with Mr. Richards on the phone a few times, but we've never met. I was county attorney myself out in eastern Oregon for several years. So, I know what it's like to go through these meetings. I was up where he is and it takes a lot of fortitude. But I did, and I'm sorry I wasn't on the agenda or anything, I just wanted to come down so, and meet y'all and introduce myself. I think the approach towards that Rockledge Drive area, that street that goes right up into the city of Rockledge, if we can get that approved into the state and the national program and work together, it's a win-win situation for the county and for the folks down there that want to preserve that little street the way it is. And so, I've talked a little bit to the folks at the state. I've been looking at what we have to do and if we can work together as a team on this, and I've only talked to the legal a little bit. But the idea would be we could all work together as a team and put that into the, the total lagoon. It also dovetails in nicely with the preservation of the, the Indian River Lagoon because the trees are the living riparian area there, and that, that helps. Plus, it cuts down on sedimentation. Plus, there might be grants that we can access to help with whatever sewage decisions get made, whether it's, you know, an advanced aerobic septic system or however, repaving it, trimming the trees and all that sort of thing. So, I just wanted to come down and meet you guys and say hi and thank you for allowing me to sit through a long meeting here.
It's a vice vice chair.
Huh? I have a little three-page letter that's going to approach the bench, Madam. This is what reads one of the people. Thank you, Your Honor. But that's just the three-page outline of the idea, but.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Question. You want to preserve the road and the trees, but not the sewer line, correct? You don't want sewer. Is that pretty much it?
I don't know yet. I think, a lot of times I've been involved with stuff that the municipalities, states or the federal have been involved in. A lot of times, it's technological alternatives that haven't been looked at. So, I don't know if y'all already got a plan or you don't, or what's, what's available out there. They want to try to preserve the ambiance of that little road. You know, it's really a, I mean, I've driven down, if you go down, you know, you've been up and down it many times. But it really is, I, I live out on the island, right straight across from it, and there's a tropical trail that comes down there. And, but it's nothing like this one. This one's a little slow road, you know? And there are trees that need to be cut down on that because they're old. We have proposed that we bring in, we have an arborist lined up from Jackson that would come down and work with your arborist and kind of walk through it and say, what needs to be trimmed and how do you trim it and what trees are, need to go, that sort of thing. So, the idea, if you do it as a win-win thing, the idea is to try to preserve the ambiance of that.
You're aware 63% of the people voted to help clean up the lagoon, correct?
Yeah.
And you're aware of the fact that the most polluting thing in the lagoon is untreated septic or septic tanks?
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know the data, but I understand that.
And you're aware that height limit on trees for the state of Florida is 14-foot, for you to clear 14-foot.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that, that applies to, it might be less.
Of course, I was told we should buy smaller garbage trucks, right?
Now, it seems to work for Rock, the city of Rockledge.
And I told them that what we could do is put dumpsters at the end of the river road and they can haul their garbage down there.
Well, I think what I'm saying is that folks now, they've hired me to come in and help them, and they're open-minded about, well, we can, they don't, they do want to preserve that road and they want to preserve the canopy. You know, that's, that's one thing that's definite. You're right about that.
How much more would you want to preserve the road when it's a US highway? US 1, it was the original US 1. Isn't it preserved under that?
No, because that's, that's US 1 out here, you know, the major.
Correct. This is old US 1 over here.
It's a little, old, going way back, is what I understand. I haven't researched all the.
It was the original US 1.
Yeah, and it's like barely wide enough for one car.
Mr. Gilmore, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I, I don't know anything about the law or attorneys, but I'll tell you one thing I do know, you don't go get an attorney in a win-win situation. So, the fact that you're here means there's no win-win. I think you'll be on the opposite side. I'll tell you right now, I'm going to be with Commissioner Goodson on this one, as that's, that's his district. I wish you, wish you lots of luck on this one.
We want to keep an open mind, an open dialogue and open with the staff and with you, Commissioner, the whole, the whole nine yards. I'm, I've been county attorney, I've been, worked with states, national, you know, federal agencies, and there's got to be a way to make it win-win.
Yeah, and Commissioner Goodson and I, and Commissioner Steele, we're, we're state representatives, and I think we just poo-pooed state legislation if you were paying attention to this meeting the last two hours where we were a little disgusted with stuff. But anyway, thank you for your time.
I just wanted to be able to connect a face with me.
You're welcome here anytime, sir.
And I appreciate it.
Stu, Stu Buchanan.
Well, we'll try to work with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And this is Crosswinds.
Yes, yes, Commissioner. My name is Stuart Buchanan. My working, mailing address is P.O. Box 1545, Tyusville, Florida, 32781. And I'm here tonight to ask the county commissioners to please consider giving assistance to a local organization called Crosswinds. So, Crosswinds is basically a semi-public, they provide semi-public services. They, I'm, I'm sure some of you are familiar with them. So, they assist our law enforcement, they assist Department of Children and Families. They're mainly funded by the state, mainly funded by the state. So, I'm sure a lot of you know that I worked in your planning department and your public, as you're in the county planning. I also wrote all your state and federal roadway grants for engineering. What a lot of people don't know is that I worked in the county the first time, 22 years ago, in Housing and Human Services, and I ran what was called the Community-Based Organizations Grant Fund. Crosswinds was one of the, the contracts I was responsible for. So, the, they've had recent staff changes. They've just had multiple board member resigns, so there's going to be a lot of new board members. But they are in trouble. To be exact, they are in about $280,000 worth of trouble, which is very likely going to make them shut their doors, which would be horrible for this community. They do really good work. So, the reason I'm here tonight is to ask you, commissioners, to take the time individually to meet with Mr. Abate and Ian from Housing and Human Services to become aware of the situation that the organization is in. If you would meet with the county manager and Ian individually, and then please consider a one-time, one-time assistance to them. We have funded them in the past several times, so we, we've had a relationship with them for 30 years. But they provide a service that if they shut their doors, it will be very bad for the children of our community. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not by expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.